John, you're on. Jonathan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. All right. So I'll jump right in. This is a regular meeting of the City Council and WPCA. Today is Monday, June 1st, 2020. It is now 6:31 PM. Jumping into item number one on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special joint meeting with the Board of Finance, held May 18th, 2020.
Waldron, so moved.
Second, Oliver.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held May 18th, 2020.
Waldron, so moved.
Thank you.
Wagner, second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? And item three, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special joint meeting held with the Board of Finance, May 21st, 2020.
Move it. Waldron.
Second, Wagner.
Right, I have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Donovan Riley as a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill the remainder of a five-year term expiring December 1st, 2021.
I'll move it. Rouette.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette.
Second, Waldron.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the Small Cities Committee.
So moved. Waldron.
Thank you.
Wagner.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Does Small Cities have a report for us?
Yes, is this going to cover 5B also? Or is that the vote? That's the vote. Okay. All right. We met before the meeting and I'd like to recommend to the council that they approve project number T 018-028 in the amount of $6,750. It's for home improvements for local land homeowner that has $34,000 in equity in the house after you deduct the liens against it. So it's a safe investment and a good thing. So that's it.
Thank you. So then is that in the form of a motion for item B?
Yes.
Okay. So a motion made by, for item B, by Councilwoman Waldron. Do I have a second?
Rabino, second.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item six, I'll entertain a motion in accordance with Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-47B, discussion and possible vote on a one-year extension of the collective bargaining agreement by and between the city of 2010 and the United Public Service Employees Union Local 424, Unit 78. This is the City Supervisory Employees Union for the period of July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021, as described in Attorney Le Maire's memo dated May 21st, 2020. And I do have Attorney Le Maire here as our Personnel Director and Attorney Michelle as Corporation Counsel if there are questions. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it. It's Rouette.
Thank you. I have a second. Thank you. So a motion and a second, and the floor is open for questions.
So Mayor, this is Rouette. I, you know, was trying to pull up the, and welcome, Jamie, by the way.
Thank you, Ann. I'm very happy to be back. Thank you.
Yeah, it's really nice to see you. Although we love Vic, we always enjoy seeing you. But so in opening this up, I know there was discussion about opening it up for any kind of concessions or potential concessions for for our unions. I'm just curious, and maybe Jamie, you could answer it. Is there any?
Maybe, Mayor, if I may, why don't I jump in at this point?
Thank you.
Rather than put Jamie on the hot seat because she kind of stepped into this midway. This this recommendation really found its genesis way back in January. And it was it was during the period of time that we were under, the Personnel Department was a little bit in disarray because we didn't have a Personnel Director. Kelly Cleo did a yeoman job in trying to manage everything that was going on, including the necessity of negotiating with the Supervisors Union, and I was, I tried to help her out. So one of the things that we began doing way back then was trying to obviously make things as easy as possible. And as it turns out, it turns out that we find that the Supervisors Union was only, was I should, let me backtrack a little bit. All the other unions are slated to receive raises in July in the amount of 2%. The Supervisors Union contract, however, was going to expire a year earlier. So we were looking to try to get the Supervisors onto the same timing schedule as the other unions and provide them with the same 2% raise that everybody else is going to get. And on the other hand, they were at the same time at the top of the scale in terms of the amount of insurance they were paying. So it was thought that the thing to perhaps do to get everything on an even keel with with our other bargaining units would be to oh, we began to negotiate a contract, but at that point is when we got hit with the pandemic issues. The problem was that we we had already made a commitment to the union to maybe, how about would you rely, would you be interested in doing this quickly with a 2% raise? We'll leave your insurance alone. Everybody would be on an even keel with the other unions. And that's when the pandemic issue hit, but the commitment had already been made. So, and it's hard to, it's hard to put the toothpaste back into the tooth. So that's why we are at this point, and Jamie happens to step into this halfway through. So that's kind of the background of what happened and why we are here today. And so I understand that there is questions now whether or not that was a wise decision. On the other hand, that's the decision that was made and that's the recommendation before the council. Jamie, if you want to add to that, I don't know if I left anything out, but.
Vic, I don't think you left anything out except to say that, again, as the agenda item is worded for discussion purposes and possible vote, there is some time to take this under consideration. We have until June 19th to make a decision. So, you know, you don't have to make, you know, take a vote tonight if you don't want to.
Other questions? I will add that between that time that we entered into negotiations and were negotiating in good faith, which is the requirement of all contract negotiations. And the last couple of weeks, when there was a request for concessions, we did reach out to the Supervisors Union on that matter. And their position was that they had bargained in good faith and under the circumstances and in light of the reports that our conversations with the unions were not going swimmingly. On the topic of concessions, they elected to place this before the council for consideration. Questions? Comments?
Just a comment, you know, sometimes it's all about timing. So I do, I would like to move to delay the vote until the June 18th meeting. I mean, I know there's a motion on the floor. I made the motion, so.
So secondary motion to table this to June 15th?
15th. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So I have a motion to table to June 15th. Do I have a second?
Oliver, second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. We'll table this one until the 15th. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to approve the IT Department's request to purchase three Panasonic ToughPads via 33 tablet systems with docking hardware and printers from Tyrepco of Wallingford in the sum of $17,025, $17,025 off the state contract DAS, contract number 15PSX0221 for the replacement of the patrol, police patrol vehicles purchased this year.
So moved. Waldron.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Uh, Rouette, second.
Thank you. Are there questions on this?
This was already on the budget line or this is already budgeted in this year?
Yeah, this is in the current fiscal year. This is our current year. Yes.
Right. Okay.
And Jerry's here if there are questions. All right. If there are no questions, I'll move it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? This motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, and I know Joel is here, so eight, nine, 10, 11 are all relative to the Sullivan Senior Center. And we'll take them in order. Number eight, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the senior, the senior center director and purchasing agent and award the contract for the flooring replacement project at the Sullivan Senior Center billiard room to BCI Bartholomew Contract Interiors of Hartford, Connecticut. This is being purchased off of state contract number 12PSX0307 for a total amount of $7,146.48 with funding as described in Joel Sikorsky's memo dated May 19th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Wagner.
Do I have a second?
Second, Waldron.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Are there questions for Joel? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the senior center director and purchasing agent and award the contract for the flooring replacement project at the Sullivan Senior Center's craft room to BCI Bartholomew Contract Interiors of Hartford, again off of state contract number 12PSX0307 for a total amount of $4,727.68 with funding as described in Joel Sikorsky's memo dated May 19th, 2020.
Rouette, I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette.
Wagner, second.
I have a motion and a second. Questions? Have to turn my lights on, sorry. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Item 10, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the senior center director and empower the mayor to sign the DOT 53102020 application and purchase, if awarded, a Lyft minivan for medical transport with funding as described in Joel Sikorsky's memo dated May 19th, 2020.
So moved. Waldron.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, Rouette.
I have a motion and a second. Are there questions?
Mayor, could I interject on that for one second?
Yes, absolutely.
In my detail that I sent you, I had a $50,000 max. I received an email from Rick Lynn and from the DOT that the chassis went up in price, so I was looking for a $54,000 max just for the detail in the background. That's total maximum and the percentage would still hold 80/20. If I don't up the maximum in the motion, then I would be responsible for the entire $4,000 if that's what the price was, instead of only 20% of that $4,000. But take any questions on that if you have them.
And you know, yeah, the motion didn't put in a limit.
The detail did. Mayor, the detail did. So I wanted to just make that clear in case it were to go back to the detail that that would be amended to a $54,000 maximum.
So let's do that. So the motion was made by Councilman Waldron and seconded by Councilwoman Rouette. Would you amend your motion to reflect the maximum price of, is it 54,000? Joel, is that what you said?
54,000. Yeah, that's the DOT's estimate maximum. It's really 48 to 54. But if we don't put in the max, because they never know what the chassis are going to cost a year and a half from now. And right now, there was a spike in chassis cost. So just to be clear and follow the paperwork correctly, I wouldn't want it to be undersold to the point where we'd have to go back and do another motion in a year.
So Councilman Waldron, are you willing to amend your motion?
Of course.
And Councilwoman Rouette, your second?
Yes.
All right. I think that, yeah, no, thank you, Joel. I appreciate your being here to clarify that. All right. If there are no other questions regarding this purchase, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Item 11, I'll entertain a motion to approve the services for the elderly commission's request to waive the city's bid process and empower the mayor to purchase two new temperature-controlled hot shot meals on wheels, four-by-four delivery vehicles from Delivery Concepts East. This is a sole-source vendor. They're West Hampstead, North Carolina, for a total cost of $48,811 for each vehicle, including delivery and graphics.
Uh, Rouette, I'll move it.
Thank you.
Wagner, second.
So I have a motion and a second. Are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to item 12, I will, actually, I don't know that this needs a motion. This agenda item is here because you will recall at the joint meeting with the Board of Finance, one of the Board of Finance members was looking for affirmation from the council as to what their expectations are with regard to a mill rate. I think that the, as I recall, the conversation was, you know, that there's year over year, a little direction that's given directly from the council in the form of a directive. But the Board of Finance felt it might be helpful for them in their deliberations before setting a mill rate. So floor is open for discussion. Councilwoman Wagner?
Yeah, I wanted to revisit the need to look at the Board of Education budget again. I don't want to vote for a cut to Board of Education. I think we have unexpected things happening in the next few months. We're trying to get school open and get kids back to school. We don't know what those costs will be. I cannot see how we could cut staff or cut out anything. We've talked about wanting to improve curriculum. And if we keep decimating our Board of Education budget, this is not going to happen.
I appreciate that, but you don't vote on that budget.
No, I know I don't. But, you know, I know that we have to cut from that because of the mill rate, and I wish we did get to vote on it. But you and
you and one other council member I know. If you're going to be voting to approve the budget ourselves, then I don't see why we're talking about it. I don't think they want you to approve the budget. I think they want us some direction on what your expectations are for the mill rate.
Right. I understand that. I understand.
Good. All right. Questions for the comments?
Well, I think, you know, we had made a comment earlier, and I want to sort of stand by it that we, you know, don't want to see a mill increase at this time. We are certainly all receiving emails from constituents that, you know, are really down in their income and really have expressed having either the same mill rate or a reduction, but I don't know that that's ever going to happen. So so that's my opinion. You know, I would just at least be able to have the finance board try and stay with no mill rate increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments on some direction?
This is Councilman Rabino. I will agree with Councilwoman Rouette.
Thank you.
Councilman Kevin Arrow. I
Thank you.
And I would just like to make the added suggestion that going forward in future budget processes, I know this is implied, I know this is implied, but maybe we make it more of a formal request of all departments. If, not specifically the zero or any of that, but if you are going to ask for something above your current, your current funding levels, that you provide specific, what we would call, where I work, a business, what we would call a business justification, which would mean you have to show that your request will in some way enable the mayor and her government to further the end of developing Torrington, of selling Torrington, of attracting business and attracting families, which is ultimately our actual tactical but our strategic goal and has been for some time. So that every request should be tied to that sort of common theme. And then start looking at budget requests that are above the current line and evaluating them on that basis. Can you justify like how this will in two or three years actually make a more saleable Torrington? That would be my request. But currently, I agree with the other two council persons.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate, especially appreciate the recommendation because my, my budget memo goes out to the department heads in January. You know, and other than tying those budget requests to some grand list growth indicator, there really hasn't been anything beyond, you know, don't spend more than you bring in. But I think that's a, it's a good, it's a good process to adopt, you know, justify.
What I have to do, what I have to do in my business, when I, when I get, I don't develop, I develop, like, I work on digital products, and usually they're internal applications that I work on. And that still ties up resources, you know, software engineers and, you know, coders and all that business. And before I, you know, I need to justify how spending this, allotting this, this many resources, this much money and this much time of our development teams to improving this product, how that will actually, in some fashion, generate more revenue for the company. And if you start looking at things in those ways, you'd be surprised at how much more productive the recommendations become. Or the requests, I should say, the requests.
Sure. No, that makes sense. I appreciate that.
One more comment?
Yes. Councilwoman Wagner?
I just wanted to say, I am not for a mill rate increase. I've stated that before. I want the mill rate to stay the same. I just, I just have to make my own feeling known about being concerned about any cuts to Board of Education, Fire and Police, especially at this time during a pandemic. I agree with the other council that we need to keep the mill rate.
So you do know that we can't do that without making cuts to Board of Education?
I know that. I know that. It's, it's tough. I just, I just
Getting messages here, so.
I know. Well, my message is that I don't want the mill rate cut, but I know, I need you to know that this is upsetting to me. So that's all. I am going to go with the council and agree on that one.
All right.
Can I piggyback off that again?
Yeah, please.
Councilwoman Wagner knows this from private conversations we've had before she was an elected official, an elected city councilwoman. The other people know this from past years of experience with me. I've made this request many, many times for a formalized process of having the Board of Education sit in front of the city council, because I think your comments, Sharon, now echo things I've said many times before and things current city council members have in one way, shape, or form referred to during this particular year because it's so tightly financed, that we we can no longer separate into two different, you know, entities, the city and the Board of Education. It is, it is one entity that we need to talk about collectively with the various boards together throughout the year, not just in these, you know, specific moments in time. It's beyond that. It's been beyond that for a long time now, you know. Our education budget provides so much in terms of social services, but it also points to, again, long-term strategic goals of developing Torrington, attracting businesses. What kind of businesses? Well, that is tied to my argument, which I expressed ad nauseam at the Board of Finance meeting, which is tied to what kind of curriculum are we going to develop specifically that we can talk about in Torrington in terms of being not only forward-thinking, progressive, but being the best at, and that is a citywide conversation. Board of Ed and city council and Board of Finance, you know. So again, let's, I would dearly love to revisit this particular conversation in, over the summer and see if we can do something about that. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Because I didn't take a motion for a vote on this, I think that unless there's a decision on the part of the council to take a motion and a recommendation to the Board of Finance with regard to the mill rates. Not hearing anybody jumping in to do that.
Well, I'm going to jump in because I think it would be good to have a motion and a vote, you know, so there would be a unified voice. Only a few of us have spoken, but I, you know, I think it would strengthen and keep us sort of on the same page with our recommendation to the finance board.
So your motion is?
I guess I'll make the motion. Yes. I'll make the motion that we maintain our mill rate, you know, with no increase.
Rabino will second it.
All right. So I have a motion and a second. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Rabino, aye.
Any opposed? All right. I think the Board of Finance will find that helpful, and I appreciate your taking the time to share your thoughts and make some recommendations going forward. All right. Item 13, I'll entertain a motion to accept Corporation Counsel's recommendation and authorize the mayor pursuant to CGS 12-179 to release the liens described in Attorney Michelle's memo dated June 1, 2020.
So moved. Waldron.
Second, Wagner.
I have a motion and a second. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Item 14, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the six tax refunds indicated on a list dated June 1, 2020.
So moved. Waldron.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Do I have a second?
Rouette, second.
I have a motion and a second. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 14, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize, wait, 15, sorry. I was busy turning my light on and forgot to cross off 14. 15. I'll entertain a motion by the Board of Councilmen here in acting as the Water Pollution Control Authority to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the five sewer user refunds indicated on list dated June 1, 2020.
So moved. Waldron.
Second, Wagner.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 16, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Building Department's report for April 2020.
Uh, Rouette, move it.
The Councilwoman Rouette. Do I have a second?
Second, Waldron.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments on that report? I would just like to say I would just like to say that, as you can see, in the month of April, from April of 2020, the building permits or the cost of the projects for these permits and the cost went down about $2 million. Yeah.
Down 66% ratio from last year.
Yeah. So, but I did see today the May report and it does look like it rebounded during the month of May. So I'm going to hope that that was just an anomaly because of bad weather or, you know, a, you know, long cold winter. But one of the things that we always use in looking at what potential revenue will be when we're thinking about our budget and what the mill rate should be set at based on those revenues, these are the very reports that we do rely on. So we unfortunately have this one or two bad months, March and April, that has us looking a little bit more conservatively about what those revenues may be for construction. All right. Motion was made by Councilwoman Rouette, seconded by Councilwoman Waldron. If there are no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Item 17, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
Some oak, Waldron.
Second, Wagner.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And nobody's opposed. All right. So Joel, you're still on. Do you want to talk a little bit about your roof?
Yes, I would love to talk about my roof. We've been in the Tremco plan for a couple of years now and they have identified some crisis spots on our roof at the senior center. Last, I guess it was two months ago now, we had a wind in the right direction and it peeled back the top of my roof over the first part of our building and it was raining directly into my office. They were able to come down and we were able to peel it back and button it up at a cost of about $2,000. And that's not the worst part of the roof. The part two was actually worse than that. And Tremco's recommendation was that if we get a 50 mile an hour or more wind in the right direction, it's going to do that same thing to the other corner of the building. And that's going to basically right over the server for the building and could cause a lot more damage. There's two proposals from Tremco to fix those two most urgent parts. It's $19,000 for the section one, which is over the offices, and $50,000 for the other part that's much worse than that. That includes a membrane and a new top plus flashing all the way around the front section of the building. The long-term damage of that would be much, much worse. So I brought it to the mayor's attention when she was down last week helping us serve our curbside lunch, by the way. Thank you, Mayor, for that. And we were going over what the plan was. Ray Drew has been involved as well with the plan from Tremco. So it is something of pretty good urgency and the long-term effect could be far more costly for that. I mean, we have a couple ideas and I haven't gotten a chance to sit down with Allison, the mayor, yet to go over possible funding for that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So just, I'm just going to jump in right there. Obviously, this is one of those things where doing it sooner than later is advisable before we end up with a much larger, more expensive project. So we are trying to identify what those funding sources will be. I think it may be a case where we coddle together a couple of funding sources and talk about some creative, creative ways to use current capital reserves, borrowing against them with a two or a three or four-year payback as opposed to borrowing and paying interest on some bank lending or bonding. So I hope by June 15th, we'll have a proposal to put before the council with a recommendation of how to move forward and get this done. In the meantime, please pray for good weather.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm piggybacking on, this is Rabino, piggybacking on that, our street department roof was in need that didn't pass the voters. What have we done in the meantime there?
So in the current budget, we have $300,000, which did survive last year's budget cuts, to do a portion of that roof. And in the current budget proposal, you'll find that there is a $600,000 line item to do the other, the rest of that roof. So, and these are the things that when we talk about planful, you know, it may be a little bit this year, a little bit next year, you know, unfortunately, living in Torrington in a distressed municipality, sometimes that's the way you have to approach these kinds of projects. So, you know, we continue to be creative and figure it out. I think that's my new tagline for the city of Torrington. Let's figure it out.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there anything else, Joel, that you wanted to share?
No, I just wanted to throw an invitation out to any of the council members to come down and help us with our curbside delivery. In June, the last three Fridays of June, we're going to do a car hop in the parking lot now that you can eat on premises. We're going to block off every other parking spot. We're going to play 50s music and we're going to grill outside if we can. We are working with the Health Department on what we can and can't do. So I'd love for you to come down and see that. We even talked about getting some classic cars down there or something just to kind of let people smile again, get them out of their houses, that kind of thing. Anytime you want to come down, it's been pretty exciting every day to do the curbside food pickup. We've had boxes of produce, boxes of vegetable, milk deliveries from Gaida, yogurt, all kinds of different things. If you saw any of my updates that we sent with the EOC team, it's been, you know, we've made lemonade out of lemons down there and we continue to do so on a daily basis. I'd like to just thank my staff in front of the council and thank the council for your continued support on what we do. The staff has really been shining stars down there through this and they've been, we've been in every day. So Meals on Wheels drivers never missed a day, tour workers didn't miss a day, medical transportation didn't miss a day. So just, I'm very proud of the staff for that and I just wanted to say that publicly. So thank you for the opportunity, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Totally. Yeah, and along those lines, what Joel says that his staff didn't miss a day, when we were adopting the teleworking and staggered schedules to reduce or increase social distancing, Joel identified that his department was one of those where that just doesn't work. But he seized the opportunity when there was less activity in the center to attack those floors and find a way to get a lot of work done. When I toured that building last week with him, amazing job at jumping on identifying where you can rip up an old carpet and get something new installed, utilizing donated funds or funds that have been accumulated from other sources other than taxpayers. So I agree, Joel, that you, kudos to your staff, but also to you because you did not waste an opportunity or a minute down there.
Thank you, Lemonade.
Yeah, a lot of lemonade down there. I saw Dan Farley is on the line. Dan, did you have anything you wanted to add this evening?
Yeah, Mayor, I just, I was in touch with Bill Baldwin, our police chief, and he was interested in adding a credit card machine to their records division because they're now doing fingerprinting and taking in permit, pistol permits. And they're trying to prevent people from coming into the lobby. So they want to do it, you know, over the phone. They were going to take a credit card number. So I did an analysis on our current credit card processor and discovered that I found another source. We could save approximately $2,000, which, which isn't that big of a deal. But Joel, if you can hang in there for another 35 years, it'll pay for your roof.
What a nice thought.
I guess, we're also working on changing the processor for our kiosk as well. That's it.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Carol Anderson is on the line. Carol, did you want to add anything?
Nothing too exciting, Mary, Mayor. We're getting quite, quite a bit busier. I think it's just a sign of the times. People are ready to start living again. We're seeing requests for birth certificates as people register their children for kindergarten and more marriages and certainly a slew of dog licenses came in today. And the Connecticut town clerks are in constant discussions with the Secretary of the State. We're insisting that they listen to us and we work together to fine tune the Secretary of the State's plan to mail out the applicancy applications to every eligible voter. There isn't much of a primary this year, so I think August is going to be the practice run for November. So we'll keep you informed as that progresses. Thank you.
Thank you. And Attorney Michelle is on the line. Did you have anything to add this evening?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Personnel Director Jamie LaMaire, did you want to add anything this evening?
Am I on? I can't tell here. My children are better than I am. I have nothing further to add. Again, I'd like to reiterate that I'm very happy to be back and I'm thankful for the opportunity.
Okay. Doesn't look like I have anybody else from the department heads. So let's move into item number 18. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
Some oak, Waldron.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? So starting with Councilwoman Rouette?
Well, I want to again welcome Jamie back to the city of Torrington. Well, you never left Torrington. I know that. You just took a reprieve from working for the municipality. But, you know, welcome back. You're always wonderful to work with. And that was it. I just wanted to mention, as a homeowner adjacent to the solar project, I received a letter today that the Veragey Company has filed their application to the Siding, Connecticut Siding Council and, you know, requested and actually for more discussion, if we could talk about it at the next meeting and have it on the agenda. But I know that we don't actually get a big say in it, but certainly neighbors have been communicating and directly with the mayor and each other. So we are, there's a lot of conversations going on. So I would really appreciate a larger conversation with the council. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. The, actually, the fact of the matter is because the city of Torrington isn't a budding property owner, we own the Torrington Middle School. So we will be, aside from a stakeholder as a municipality, as a, as an abutting property owner. So my plan is to bring forward the, the proposal as to whether or not the council wishes to make comment in support or opposition to the project. And we'll put that on the June 15th agenda if it's helpful. I'll make sure that Veragey is aware that that will be the case so that they can answer questions as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. So David Oliver, anything this evening?
No, thank you.
Okay, this evening. Thank you. Drake Waldron?
Oh, yeah, just want to mention that Torrington High School is headed toward having a unique graduation this year. They will be taping the seniors walking the stage at the school, one at a time, all distanced apart and all of that, the appointments in about two weeks. And then they will have a virtual graduation at the Pleasant Valley Drive-In. People go up in some cars and watch it. So, kind of neat.
Nice.
That's on July 1st. It's going to be.
I think there's a bit of a parade also, are we?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
At the school, I think.
Yeah, from the school. I know that we're working with the police department on figuring out the route for the graduates to be able to drive through town and, you know, get it, hopefully we'll get people to stand out and wave them on and cheer them on and give them some recognition for their 12 years, 13 years, if you include the kindergarten. So thank you for that. Councilwoman Wagner?
Yes, I would like to also welcome Jamie back. She's in a good position and she knows, she knows what she needs to do and I think we're going to benefit greatly from her being there. I also want to commend you and Alice for, as you said yourself, for figuring it out. This is not an easy process to pull this budget together. So many disparate ideas and people. Thank you very much for doing that. And just finally, congratulations to our graduates. So glad to hear that they'll be doing some type of celebration for them. They've worked hard and it's better than the alternative of not having anything. And I really appreciate everybody working together to pull that off. That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Rabino?
Nothing, Mayor. Welcome, Jamie.
Thank you. And Councilman Kevin Arrow?
Just a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Because of the quarantine in our schools, were there adjustments made to our transportation budget?
It is my understanding that there, there was a renegotiation of that transportation contract. And I believe that that's in the form of a credit against next year's expenses.
Okay, one will, I mean, that's, that should be significant, right? I mean, it's approximately a third of the year, maybe, that we didn't require the busing.
So I'm thinking, yeah, March 20th, I think, is when they ended school. So March to April to May to June. So it's.
Actually, I thought it was earlier than that. Was March 20th when it finally?
I believe it was March 20th that they actually discontinued the classes.
25% maybe?
Yeah. I will tell you that I met with the superintendent and the board chair and the business director because we did talk about where they were going to end their year. As you are probably aware, the Board of Finance did create a separate fund, Fund 282, which is a COVID response fund. And we moved all of our COVID-related expenses into that fund. So it's out of the operating budget and it's being accounted for in this separate fund so that it's easier, far more transparent to see exactly what did it cost us as a municipality to respond to that pandemic. And whatever reimbursement comes in, goes into the same account. So hopefully we end up with, you know, a balance. You know, you spend $160,000, you get $160,000 from FEMA and everything balances out. When we met with the Board of Education, we discussed the Board of Education also utilizing that fund to transfer all of their COVID-related expenses, which were far more than the city's expenses with, with student lunches that had to be continued, with technology purchases that need to be made, custodial expenses. So they also agreed that they're going to move all of their COVID-related expenses out of their operating budget, which gave a far clearer picture of what their surpluses were at the end of the year. And those surpluses will be utilized to offset the next year's expenses and.
When available, Mayor, could we get, just, I would just like to see what the savings were, specifically transportation.
Mayor?
Really want to look at that. If you could just give us those numbers when they're available.
Absolutely. Yes, I can. Yeah.
And that would be it for me.
That's it.
Yep, thanks.
All right. The only thing that I'm going to add as part of this discussion is just to let you know that on June 8th, the, we're going to reopen City Hall to the public. Obviously, we're getting ready for tax season and quite a few of our taxpayers prefer to pay their taxes in person. And so we're trying to gear ourselves up for what that's going to look like. So on June 8th, we'll reopen just the south side entrance of the building. That's the entrance off of City Hall Avenue. The, we're still encouraging all of our visitors and anybody that needs the services here in City Hall to continue to make appointments. We're also trying to establish some messaging that will encourage them to use any of the online services. And what you'll see coming up in the coming weeks is a recommendation for an investment in online permitting so that there are fewer builders and contractors and. so that there are fewer builders and contractors and homeowners that are doing some renovations in their homes needing to come in here to deliver plans and pay those expenses. But our goal is from June 8th to July 1st to try to limit the access to the building to that south side entrance, still securing any of the common spaces like the auditorium, you know, the break rooms, so that we're limiting the amount of space that our custodians have to maintain. And then right after July 1st, move into that final phase of opening the building entirely to the public. So it's an important next step as we undo what we did to close the building to the public and, but also sending a strong message to all of our users that we are public servants and, you know, we need to be accessible to the public. Along those same lines, our Economic Development Director, Resta Malaka, and I, our city planner, Martin Connor, Chief Peter Towey, and Torrington Area Health and Chief Baldwin have been holding tele-town hall meetings with industry sectors. So we met with our restaurants and our hairstylists before the reopening of those industry sectors. Last week, we had a tele-town hall with our faith-based community. And I'm really excited to say all but five of our churches participated in the teleconference. So very exciting to engage that population in reopening and establishing an open line. And of course, the retailers were the final, the final sector. We will be moving into meeting with manufacturers. And then we're going to establish regular quarterly meetings to see how we can help these industries develop coalitions and perhaps consortiums where their purchasing power is fortified by economies of scale. It's good work. Not the kind of work you want to undertake because of a pandemic, but work that I think is beneficial because we went through this and we're coming out the other end more aligned and in it together. The only other thing that I will add is, as some of you may know, in light of the George Floyd, the horrendous and heartbreaking events around the George Floyd incident in Minneapolis and the national scene on and the outcry for social justice, we have in Torrington experienced a couple of small protests that have been very respectful. And where, I had a meeting earlier this evening with Chief Baldwin and some of our Cultural Affairs Committee members, and our culture is beautiful, and the Workman AME Zion Church, just to touch base, to start that line of communication. Because always through these things, what we know is it's always an opportunity to assess what we're doing, you know, to check ourselves, to see if we've thought of everything and everybody. And then moving forward, continue that dialogue and engagement of the community as a whole. So been busy. Think we'll be getting busier in the next few weeks. But I am looking forward to tomorrow evening when we'll do budget adoption and mill rate setting. So if there are no questions for me directly on any of those, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Ruet, so moved.
Wagner, second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Good night, all.
Good evening. Good night.